A Board of Commissioners meeting to order Tuesday, March 1st, 2022. And would you call roll, please?
Fisher Snyder.
Yeah.
Glazer.
Yeah.
Twilliger.
Yeah.
Geisler.
Yeah.
Dorian.
Yeah.
Knowson.
Here.
Chairman Bowden.
Here.
Seven present, zero absent.
Commissioner Twilliger, would you lead us in the invocation and the pledge, please?
Heavenly Father, we pray for your love and compassion to a bow as we walk through this challenging season. We ask for your wisdom for those leaders who bear the load of making decisions with widespread consequences. We pray for those who are suffering with sickness and all of those who are caring for them. We ask your protection for the people of Ukraine. We also ask that you will provide necessary resources to sustain them. And Lord, as we exercise good sense that you provide in your mercy, may we also approach each day in faith and peace, trusting that the truth of your goodness is for all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next is the approval of the minutes for February 1st and February 8th of 2022. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will approve the minutes for February 1st and February 8th of 2022 and move on to the acceptance of the bills, please.
All right. Properly addressed, General Bank claims for the weeks of 117 through 121, $715,543.99, with total general fund expenditures, $483,209.11. General Bank claims for the weeks of 124 through 128, $330,387.1, with total general fund expenditures, $157,353.97. General Bank claims for the weeks of 131 through 24, $1,055,220.45, with total general fund expenditures, $131,932.66. General Bank claims for the weeks of 27 through 211, $1,199,369.73, with total general fund expenditures, $122,647.85. For the weeks of 214 through 218, $3,927.26, with total general fund expenditure, $74,872.75.
Commissioner Knowson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will pay the bills and now we're going to move on to the special program of the day. It is an update from the We Hear You Coalition with Sharon Mortenson, Diane Brown Wilhelm, Alicia Christie, and Perry Holloman. If you guys would please, whoever's coming first, interested to hear what you have to say.
Well, good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for the opportunity to present to you again. I'm Sharon Mortenson. I work at Midland Area Community Foundation. And Diane Brown Wilhelm is obviously the chair of our We Hear You Task Force. We came to you back in, it was the fall of 2020, so quite a while ago, to ask for a resolution, which you all granted in support of the work that was being done by the We Hear You Coalition on a diversity, equity, and inclusion assessment and survey of our community. And I know the county as well helped to support the cost of that, as did the city and Midland Area Community Foundation. So, thank you so much for your support of that. So that work has gone on and we're here today to share with you the results. Just very briefly, some highlights of the results of that survey. And we invite you to read the full assessment, and I should say assessment and survey, because it was both, on the midlandcountydashboard.org website. You'll see all the information posted there. But again, thank you for the opportunity to present some highlights of what we learned through that to you. And I'll turn it over to Diane for her comments.
And just quickly, good morning.
Good morning.
Good to see you again. You're going to hear some information, the results, that some you may agree with, some you may not. But what I'm going to ask you to do is to keep an open mind. Because what we have is data, feedback from our community, county, city, and their voices have been heard. So I'm going to ask you to keep an open mind also because we may not have experienced or have experienced some of the things the residents within our community has experienced. And so to us, we may not understand it and it may not seem real. But to them, they've lived through this or are living through it. And there are challenges out there. So I just ask you, as we move forward, if you keep an open mind. And I'm going to turn it over and introduce Alicia Christie and Perry Holloman.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Alicia. I work with Sharon at the Midland Area Community Foundation. Specifically, I have walked along the journey of this We Hear You Task Force since its inception. And part of my role has been from the vantage point of the Cultural Awareness Coalition, which is a community-based group that's really looking at advancing equity and inclusion within Midland County. And so today, I just wanted to share a little bit of the introduction to the We Hear You process. Many of you may have a working context of this, but just for purpose of kind of level-setting as it relates to what we're doing here today, we thought it would be important just to share for a few minutes on how this work even came to be in the first place. But before we get started, I think it's really important that we ground ourselves in the vision statement of Midland County. And so as many of you know, maybe all of you know, Midland County has a vision statement, which is "Together Forward Bold: An Exceptional Place Where Everyone Thrives." And this is really important to highlight because this was developed almost a decade ago from a group of cross-sector leaders in our community through the Community Success Panel. And ultimately, there was a large community assessment, conversation, focus groups to really say, "Who are we as a community and how do we make sure that we show up and we are, for our community and our people, what they need us to be?" And through a lot of work, and I'm oversimplifying it, of course, this vision statement was developed. And this is important because as we look at the We Hear You Task Force, and really what we're convening to do is really look at that equity and inclusion component within our community, we can't do that without remembering this vision statement. That if we are not a place that is intentionally developing space for everyone to thrive, then we're missing that mark on the diversity and equity and inclusion component. So we start here to just say this really grounds our work as that We Hear You Task Force. Okay. Just to, again, re-review the timeline as it relates to We Hear You. As Sharon mentioned in her introduction comments, she came in front of all of you with Diane back in the fall of 2020. And we were just talking before this meeting that the last few years feel very hazy and things run together. And so we just wanted to make sure to list out this timeline here. But ultimately, as you'll recall, in May of 2020, the murder of George Floyd took place. And that obviously was not directly within our community, but it did impact our community. It required us to have really hard conversations as, hey, how do we make sure that this does not happen in Midland County? How do we get ahead of some of this work? And so the We Hear You Task Force convened. And really, the convening of that task force was to identify and put out a public statement condemning the murder and the commitment to advance equity, inclusion, and justice in Midland County. And that took place in June of 2020. And quite honestly, I don't know that we fully understood or anticipated what we were endeavoring in, in June of 2020. Because we really came together to say, no, this is not okay. We need to do better as Midland County. But what that means had a lot of conversations between that June and September timeline. So in September 2020, after several conversations and many months of convening, the decision to conduct a diversity, equity, and inclusion community assessment was identified. And I think it's really important to share with you that that assessment was not just a community survey. A lot of times you will hear the survey and the assessment synonymously. And while they are synonymous, there are two very important factors. That we polled and received survey data and feedback from Midland County residents, but we also use publicly available data through our U.S. Census, through the CDC, through the FBI, to really build this broad community assessment and the outcomes around that assessment. And again, I think that that's just really important because what you're going to hear today and what you're going to read in the future is really about melding the two of those together. That our community is pretty on par and in line with the feedback and the needs assessment that was identified in the publicly available data as well. And so in February of 2021, we launched that community survey. We had a significant response. Several thousands of people, I don't have the specific number here, which is around 3,000 people. And again, that's a bit of a hypothesis. I don't have it specifically in front of me. Conducted this and completed this community survey. And so around that same time, SVSU was our research group. And they were conducting the community assessment that was running parallel to this survey. In August of 2021, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Community Assessment was completed. And at that point, we really got together to say, you know, what is next? We want to make sure that we take a very informed and intentional path forward with this assessment data. We do not want this to be a dataset that exists, is something we have, is something to cross off of the list and then we move on. We want this to be a bit of a living, breathing process and assessment. And so through the next couple of months, we prepared for an action planning workshop in the fall of 2021. And we brought together key community leaders who took up space in the six key areas that we focused on in the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Community Assessment. And we brought people together to talk about what's being done, what could be a gap within our community, and what could be a solution or an action item as it relates to this community assessment outcome. And so through those conversations, we then led into the community assessment launch, if you will, public launch, which happened in November of 2021. That was not only recorded for people to view it as perpetuity, but it was also shared with the community at large. It was heavy in the way of data. But really, ultimately, what they wanted to make sure to capture is this was a very informed process. It was a research process that really built for us some key assessment and outcome areas that we can focus on as it relates to equity and inclusion within Midland County. And then in December of 2021, the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Community Assessment became available and it's on a shared website that I encourage all of you to go to. You'll hear this website a few times today, but it's themidlandcountydashboard.org. There is no way that we will share with you even a scratch of the surface related to the community assessment. But that website has all of the available information as it relates to our community assessment and those survey-specific outcomes. So please do check that out. Anybody have any questions on the timeline? All righty. As I mentioned, we focused in our community diversity, equity, and inclusion assessment on six key areas of study. It was demographics, housing, socioeconomics, healthcare, policing and criminal justice, governmental structure and representation. And so what Perry and I want to do today, just in our few minutes that we have with you, is run you through this information. What we essentially did is have a highlight, or the six key areas up at the top of each of these slides. Now, in no way do I think that you will be able to digest this and take this just for what it's worth in these next few minutes. But everybody in their packet does have an outline. And all of this information is in that outline. In addition, it's also listed in the website that I just referenced. So I think the first piece, and we generally do start on this demographic component within these community assessment conversations as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion. Because without fully understanding just a very simple fact related to Midland County demographics, we don't really feel like we can move forward in talking about some of the assessment areas of opportunity, gaps, those types of things. The biggest thing to take away from this slide is that Midland County is racially and ethnically diversifying. It's important to note that between 2000 and 2018, non-Hispanic white population decreased, while Hispanic, Asian, African-American, and Native American populations have increased. And so ultimately, that can inform a lot of dialogue and discussion that we have amongst our teams here and elsewhere as we think about what does it mean to really build a system with equity and inclusion at its forefront. We at first have to identify and acknowledge that we are a diversifying community. And while we might not always know what that means and how to best respond, it allows us to ask the next questions. It allows us to move forward in a way of thinking about all people having that opportunity to thrive in Midland County. And again, I think there's just some information, and I know it's in your packet as well. But specifically, they, people in the community survey were asked as it relates to, let's see, I'm sorry. The community survey asked if Midland has done enough to ensure that racial and ethnic minorities have equal rights. Respondents provided 147 written comments. And I think it's really important to note that we saw four key themes as it relates to responses of people who live in Midland County. There's a recognition that effort has been made or is being made, but more work does need to be done. People do not know or see what is or has been done. There is a lack of, there is a note that there is a lack of diversity within our community. And people strongly disagree or disagree that enough has been done to ensure racial and ethnic minorities have equal rights in our community. And again, those are just some key points that we took away from the full assessment that we just wanted to make sure to highlight for you today. And then moving into the second key area of study for the community assessment is housing. And it's just important to note a few key points here. That in general, African-Americans, Hispanics, Asian-Americans are more concentrated in block groups in Midland City compared to the block groups in the townships and are likely to reside in rental properties. Written comments, regardless of race or ethnicity, related that low-income and affordable housing is in short supply and not enough is being done by our community nonprofits and governmental agencies to address this issue. We Hear You respondents indicated that 41.4% of African-Americans, 38% of Hispanics, and 18% of Asian-Americans experienced housing inequality in Midland County. And again, I don't think that any of this might come as a shock or surprise, but I think it's really pointed when we see that written, when we see it on, you know, paper or online, because this really shows us where our community is at, right? And where perceptions and beliefs and experiences of others are at. And so I just wanted to make sure that we brought this for you today so you have a grounding point as your continuing dialogue around equity and inclusion within Midland County. And so I'm going to turn it over to Perry and he's going to walk you through the remainder of those six key areas of study from the assessment.
All right.
Thank you, Alicia.
Thank you.
Thank you. Before I get into the other areas, I just want to take just a second to introduce myself. I am Perry Holloman. I'm from northern Mississippi. I moved here from Baton Rouge, Louisiana, where I worked for Dow Chemical and I've worked in IT. I recently retired in December of this year, so I'm a recent retiree. And my thought was that once my Dow career is over, that I would probably move back to the warmer weather of northern Mississippi or southern Mississippi. But we decided not to do that. I've been in this community now for over 30 years. So I'm vested here. My wife and I decided we wanted to stay here after retirement. Well, as we look around this city and this county, there's a lot of things here to offer. Even as African-American minority in this kind of, in this area, we feel very comfortable being here. We know there's a lot of work being done for diversity, inclusion. But so everybody doesn't feel the same way that I do. Our survey data gave us feedback that we have some work to do. I want to be in a place where we all can live that vision for this county, for this city. Together, forward, and bold. So let me get into some of the other areas, socioeconomic here. We talked about the diversity, but there's also diversity when it comes to the income stratification in this, in the city and the county. The real is a lot of time thought about as being a place of affluent citizens, but we have affluence all the way down to low poverty. And we have to make sure that we are doing what we can for each and every one of those different categories. Okay? The census data, along with our data, tell us that we need more education and training for these higher-wage jobs. The jobs are available, but we don't have people who can fit those jobs just because they don't have the training. They don't have the education. What can we do to make them more qualified? Okay? And then we have a large percentage, or a percentage of our households in the county and city that are living at or below the Alice poverty level. That means those are the people who are kind of, got jobs, they're working, but they're not making a livable wage. So they're existing. So how do we do about those as well? Then an area of healthcare. Healthcare suggests that there are inequalities in the healthcare of the racial or ethnic minorities in Midland County. This not only starts when you're older, but it starts at infancy, when ladies are pregnant, right? Getting pregnant prenatal care, maybe not affordable to those. They say 22% of our Y responders, they could not access affordable healthcare. Could not access affordable healthcare, which thinks sometimes is a basic need for our community. Got 22% of them cannot access that care. Policing and criminal justice. They talked about that we started our We Hear You Task Force after the event with George Floyd. A lot of that was around policing, criminal justice. Our survey data tells us that the non-Hispanic white, you know, like they are, that the non-Hispanic whites feel like they are, have not treated justically, respectfully, or fairly when it comes to the Midland City Police and the Midland County Police. Remember, this is what our data is telling us. This is what our people feel. All right? And on the count, on the flip side of that, it said that the whites feel like they have more faith when it comes to the Midland County Police and the Midland City Police. Just think about that for a second. That's what our data is telling us. I know in this community that there are a lot of things that's going on to improve that situation. Or it may not be as bad as people think, but that is what the data is, what people are feeling and seeing. It's what they feel and what they kind of see. So what do we do about those things? And then also, in our criminal system and our police system, said it needs to be more trained when it comes to implicit bias. Almost has bias amongst us, but how do we recognize those? How do we deal with those, those biases? Governmental structure and representation. Alicia pointed out that there's a lot of things that's going on already in our city where it's diversity, equity, inclusion. People may not see what's going on. They're not aware of what everything is being done. So I said, there's a lot of things that's being done. Okay? It said we're racial and ethnic minorities are underrepresented in the Midland County and Midland County township political structure. They're underrepresented. And I must say, if we can look around our room today and see the diversity when it comes to the male, female, white, but I don't see very much as far as any other ethnic group. What do we do about that? Is that good? Is that bad? Do we want to do anything about that? Also, data points to the need to examine additional ways to diversify local government, including the appointments and hiring practices in city and county government. Not only in boards like these, city councils, but up and down the structure of our city and how we hire people. What are we doing about those things? And people see that as being squarely in the hands of our leaders in the community as to, do we want to take action? Do we want to make sure that our place is diverse? That equity for everyone? Everyone feel included? Okay? So this is what our data is telling us. And they're putting it on us now to see what are we going to do about it? Are we going to take the action about those things? Okay? So I know probably running out of time, but I want you to leave a few minutes for questions. If there are any questions for myself or Diane or Sharon or Alicia.
Any questions? Anybody? I think it was a good presentation and eye-opening. We appreciate it.
Okay.
So, no question. Commissioner Knowson.
Yeah, just, I've been involved in some of this. I haven't been involved lately, but I just want to point out, you know, I've tried to have an open mind about all of this. And I've learned a lot through this experience of data collection, et cetera. I think one of the challenges we have is the challenge of small numbers. We are diversifying as a county and as a city, but from a pretty, pretty small base. I think the, I don't remember, but I think it's 3% African-American. Is that about right from the county?
That would be a little bit high.
That's even a little high?
Yeah.
So, for instance, when we talk about county government, let's replace one of us with a minority. We're now overrepresented. So that's the challenge of small numbers. And so I'm not saying it's right, wrong, or indifferent, but I think we have to keep in mind that when we say underrepresented or overrepresented, that's relative to the whole population of the county. And in general, you want the population of your decision-makers to kind of reflect the population of the county. So I just want to point out that dilemma, and it's truly a dilemma.
If I could, you know, the other, another element, Scott, to the example. People have to step forward and want to take on the burden, I say the burden, the challenge, the challenge of...
Not a burden.
Yeah. There are times it's a burden, but there are times, you know, it's a challenge.
Absolutely.
And it takes time, but to file and run for office, you know? And then give the people a chance to hear your views, your thoughts, you know, and your vision for the, you know, you, the candidate, whoever.
Right.
And then have the opportunity to give them the chance to vote for the available candidates that are there. That would be my encouragement, you know, that people have to be, to see that as an opportunity, you know, to make change and then to run for it.
I would totally concur with Steve and say that, you know, just looking at, I think Steve has four townships, Jeanette has five, I have three, and looking at the makeup, and it's ground floor. If you want to get involved, you've got to show up at the township level. You've got to just show up and look where, if you care about your community, and look where it is. And it's hard to get leaders to step up to the plate at a township level. It's kind of the same people, year after year, year after year. And I don't know that if I'm off on a tangent, but it's kind of the same people. They might have some complaints, but they don't really want to step up to the plate. And it's that way, not just in Midland County, it's throughout the state, it's throughout the nation. So, but it's hard to get those leaders. I think that we would welcome them.
Let me just add a comment.
You know what I mean?
No, no, what you mean, Kate, let me just add a comment back to those things. When we see, at least we talk about succession planning and who can do certain things. You kind of go out and talk to some people and try to get them encouraged. You may identify some people who you felt like got that gumption of what I'm going to do for the community and try to recruit those people. So are you recruiting people? I have people in mind that may diversify, right? Encourage them and let them know about what you can, what's available, what you can do. Right? So I think that's the thing that we could do more, do a better job of. Okay? I should stand always as limited and we don't have that many people. I don't know how, Kate, how you got here, right? So did someone talk to you and say, and just they looked this opportunity?
Yep.
Maybe just someone else.
Hands on, and it's hard during the pandemic because everybody's kind of been hiding out. But I totally understand. You've got a really good point.
Everybody was slow with their hands, but now it's all going everywhere.
I just want to thank you for your presentation. Thank you, Sharon. I want to understand the data a little bit more. So in Midland County, we have about 83,000 Bridget, 84,000 people. And this was based on about 3,000. So what is the percentage of that for the community?
5%.
5%. 5%.
Yeah. When you look at...
We surveyed about 5%.
We, we, respondents came back as 5%. We, the survey went out to everybody. We did it to everybody, right? So when we start getting a survey, you start kicking a survey about 10, 15%, 20%. You're talking...
It was available to everybody.
Very good.
And it went out to everybody online or... It went out to everybody online or by mail?
It was online.
It was online available? Okay.
Yeah, advertised, available online for people to-
Okay, thank you.
Did something, Commissioner Nelson?
Yeah, just to, just to follow up quick on the idea of diversity in government. One of the things we do is we do appoint a lot of commissions and boards, and that is our purview. But, you know, again, you still have to have the candidates. And frankly, I would look to you guys to help us out.
Absolutely.
And identify those folks that you think might be interested in some of these positions.
So I'm not saying this to, to just say to the commission here, but I'm talking about inward to our task force as well. That's got you absolutely right. We got to vote here as well.
Anybody else?
Good point, Scott.
I just wanted to add one quick thing. As well as the survey, it's important to know that there is the assessment that was publicly available info. So when we talk about 5%, that was just survey. But remember, this also represents census, CDC, FBI data as well. So, so it's broader than just those that took the survey. So just important to know.
Sure. Thank you, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your presentation today and very much appreciated and very informative. So glad you guys took the time to come in and share with us.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we are next to move on to special program of the day. Oh, excuse me. Public comment, we're going to do public comment. So we're going to go public comment on anything that is not on our agenda today. Anything that's not on our agenda, please keep in mind that it's, raise your hand and I will call on you. It's three minutes. It's three minutes, there is a hard cutoff. It's not public questions and answers, it's public comment. And in three minutes, you're done and I will ask you to leave. So is anybody here that would like to public comment? Yes, please state your name and address, Kelly.
Good morning, Kelly Bax, Coleman, Michigan. First thing I'd like to say is here, all equal under the law and in representation from this committee. You all took an oath of office on the Constitution to represent all the people of your county. I want it brought to the attention of this county commission at this time that your delegated authority once again was acting sneaky and doing stuff that was very nefarious. They turned a board meeting into a public hearing. When we got wind of it on Sunday night, without our first class mailing, mind you, or any other kind of notification, we sent out emails, we made phone calls, and in the interim of getting caught, they changed it to a TEFRA, something like a TEFRA meeting. But they're going to say now it's just a public hearing at the beginning and it's to take on bonds. It's a $250 million bond for the counties. But don't worry about it. It's just a little thing. You don't need to bother showing up, but you better have whatever you want written prior to or on the date of. Well, the TEFRA, they have to have seven days of a TEFRA being recorded and put out to the people. It only changed yesterday. So again, it doesn't fit within the timelines or the guidelines of the law. So you cannot hold that meeting on Thursday with regards to that public hearing. They're going to have to make another hearing and they're going to have to announce it to the people. With that being said, you started out with your morning prayer and you talked about widespread consequences. The county took on these dams through condemnation. Four Lakes Task Force settled for it. You guys weren't aware of it. They brought it to your attention that they settled. They turned around and gave you the dams and the properties. The county took on a debt of $250 million plus dollars that they couldn't afford without a vote of the people, without a millage. When you say, take a millage, they, you guys say, well, if we ask for a millage, it won't pass. That means you're not asking for a representation of your people. You're asking for a representation of a corporation of people, the ones that want what they want and they want to force us to pay for it. When Judge Kears ruled on this in 2019, it was a whole different ask. You were asking to maintain a legal lake level with a special assessment district to help operate it. This is building brand new dams. There's no longer a lake to maintain. If you put this $250 million bond issue up and you guys vote yes on it, you will lock us in forever. The state that regulates the dams when Boyce owned them will regulate this county. It will become the debt of the people. You talk about equality and they talk about low income housing and stuff like that. If you pass that bond without my vote, you've just detrimented me even more so. My mortgage didn't go down, but my property values did. My, my life expectancy as far as what my usage was for that property is gone at this time. It's not what I bought. I bought lakefront property. I'm a no too sad person. I don't want to pay for something that I didn't create. That's not my responsibility, but I want to be made whole. I want my lake put back. I want this county commission to start holding your delegated authority to the same oath that you took because they represent you. They're not representing you in kind. They're breaking laws. They're trying to manipulate everybody, not only you, but we, the people. They put articles in the paper that say, everybody was happy when they walked out of a meeting. I got phone call after phone call after phone call. People were very upset. They were pissed when they went in there to negotiate. When they went in there to negotiate, putting a special assessment between here and between there, we're going to assess you for this much or this much. Come in and negotiate it. So, and when they added the at large.
Kelly, you're over three minutes now?
When they added the at large, they changed the ask.
Now, I gave you even over three minutes. So thank you.
You're also confused. You weren't even sure when, you didn't start the clock. So you're not really sure you had three minutes. I don't agree with your policy. Other people come up here and talk unlimited and you don't attack us. You just don't like what I'm saying.
Not going to ask again. Is there any public comment? Yes, please state your name and address.
Good morning, Commissioner. I'm Brian Harrison. I am actually from Rockford, Michigan, but I work with Advisor Care Home Healthcare and Hospitals, and we operate in the Midland County area, serving patients as well as multiple areas across the state. Thank you for having me allow, allowing me to speak publicly today. As I mentioned, with Advisor Care companies, we work with Medicare, Medicaid, VA, Work Comp, and Auto Insurance to serve patients and families that have been affected by different events. I'm here to, I'm here with you today to share some of the challenge we've been facing since the 2019 Auto Insurance Reform Act went into effect at the state level. First and foremost, I want to be clear, it is not our intention or our goal to rewind that legislation completely. We do value a lot of the work that was put into it by the state and do recognize and did recognize some of the fraudulent acts that were occurring by certain providers in different areas. So we do welcome a lot of the changes that went into effect. One of the things that we do believe was unintended is some of the results now that home healthcare agencies are facing while serving families. As an example, the law put in place a blanket 45% reduction on reimbursements that we as a home healthcare company are entitled to when serving patients in their homes. Meaning when we provide a caregiver, certified nurse assistant, or a home health aide into the home at an hourly rate, we typically in 2019 would be reimbursed around $30 per hour. That 45% reduction now blanketed across that service is garnishing only $16.50 per hour being reimbursed by an insurance carrier. As you guys know, given the wages and labor and COVID and all that stuff, we're having to pay folks at least $17, $18, not $20 an hour just to go and do that work. We're not asking for any fiscal support from the county, but truly just drawing an awareness and sharing that this is an issue again at the state level. There have been other county boards that have passed resolutions. If that's something that the board would consider, we'd love to be on the agenda. If, at the very least, we can be a resource going forward and talking with your legislatures, whether it's State Rep. Net Glenn or Senator Jim Stamos, we'd love to be supportive of that and work with you guys in that process. There are things happening at the state level that, that we believe is, is helpful, but we also recognize your local elected official roles and believe that you can also have a voice in supporting that. So again, don't want to take it back to pre-2019, but we do believe this unintended consequence should be fixed for those families who depend on home healthcare to remain in their homes and now even people who purchase unlimited PIP medical going forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes, please. Please state your name and address.
I'm in Jerome Township. So it's a Sanford address on Huckleberry Road. And I also work with a home healthcare agency. I am the CEO of Compassionate Care Home Health Services. And I'm here to talk about exactly the same thing Brian is here to talk about from Advisor Care. And I want to let you know on a personal level that one of the clients that we've had to discharge services for actually is a resident of Midland County, rural Midland County. He is mid 50s, severe auto accident. He had been receiving care, attendant care, home health aid care in his home, a mobile home out in rural Midland County, eight hours a day, seven days a week. The, as a result of one of the unintended consequences of this legislation, his auto insurance carrier is now only willing to reimburse that care at $11.60 an hour, which as you can imagine, does not begin to cover the cost of putting a caregiver in a home. We were diligently with the insurance company, trying to come to some kind of an understanding and eventually had to, this man has lost his services. And he's one example of so many around the state, but I did want to let you know, I've met this man, I've been in his home, I've worked with a caregiver in his home, I've done the nursing assessments in his home, and he's right here in your county. And I, I'm just echoing what Brian said, please consider becoming more informed about what's happening to these people around the state. Please consider passing a resolution, asking our legislators to, to do something. Much of that law was very, very much needed. I'm not here to argue that fact, but there were little bits of it that were tacked on at the end that have had enormous unintended consequences for some of these people. Thank you very much for letting me say so.
Thank you very much. Yes, please state your name and address and let me comments to three minutes. All right.
I'm Julie with Advisor Care Home Healthcare. I'm, I don't have an address in Midland, however, some of our clients do. What I just want you all to know is I've had the pleasure of meeting and working with, you know, the accident victims in your county. But now I'm also getting calls that we have to deny care to people in your county. I probably get three a week asking to please help them. I have spouses crying, moms crying. They can't do it 24/7. What the insurance company has done is lowered their rates of pay and what they can do. They can't survive on $6 an hour and take care of their loved one and still have a home. So some of the people in Midland County may lose their home. They definitely don't have the care. And it's not that we won't provide the care, we can't provide the care at $11, up to, you know, $16. I personally have begged insurance adjusters, please just negotiate with us. We know there needs to be a fix, but you have a lot of people in your county, again, that I'm getting calls weekly to please take care of every week.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment today? Seeing none, we'll move to standing committee reports. Anne, would you read report number one, please?
Date of February 24th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Administration and Operations Committee recommend approval of the 2022 Section 5310 grant agreement with the Michigan Department of Transportation. The term of this agreement is from October 1st, 2021 through September 30th, 2022. Under this agreement, Midland County Connection is eligible for $170,000 in funding designated for operating and mobility management expenses. Respectfully submitted, James Geisler, Chairperson, Scott Noson, Eric Dorian, Administration and Operations Committee.
Commissioner Geisler.
Mr. Chairman, the A and O Committee recommends the adoption of Agenda Item 7-2-22.
Does anybody have any public comment on this item? Yes, please state your name and address, please.
Hello, guys.
Three minutes.
Coleman, Michigan. I just want to state that I've been here for the meetings when they were discussing this transportation. This was a, went from 18% to 40% because of COVID. The, the young lady that was here from the transportation who's here today, she didn't state how much money they actually lost because of COVID, because the thing she said to me was, well, the year's not out yet. So it seems like we're in a money grab right now and everybody seems to think grant money's free money. Every time that you guys vote for grant money and give it away without having something on the books and showing need for that cost, you're choking the yoke of every taxpayer, of every hardworking person out there today. And then in the future, the generations are going to have to pay for it because we're over $30 trillion in debt right now in this nation. So it's not free money. It's not grant money. It's taxpayer money. And I know it seems, you don't, you don't really see the outcome of what's happening. Drive around your community. You know, you talk about stuff. I'm going to say something like about gentrification. I don't know if you know what the term gentrification actually stands for, but what it is, is the process whereby the character of a poor urban area is changed by wealthier people moving in, improving housing, and attracting new businesses, typically displacing current inhabitants in the process. The process of making someone or something more refined polite and respectable. I don't agree with that terminology. We're all respectable. We're all human beings. We're all equal under the law. It doesn't matter what your race is, what your background is for your income, where you grew up, what your education is. So when you guys sit here and you vote on grant money and you're giving it away for transportation, there's other areas that need it, but because the guidelines of the government restrict you to where you can spend it, it's wasteful. So why do it just because you can? Because every time you guys pass a grant, you're forcing more money onto the people that need that transportation, that need to have their housings fixed, that need to have their roads fixed. And we don't have it because we're wasting it in areas just because it's given away. We need to start thinking logically and make people show it on the books. If they say that they have a 40% loss, then we will make up that 40% loss. But you can't say, we know this year, we're going to have a 40% loss. It's kind of like buying dams in the process and then they're broken and then taking them through condemnation. They're different things. You were buying something that worked and now you've got something that's broken. We need to stop just throwing away all this grant money and we need to think about where it's coming from and the effects that it has on every working, taxpaying American. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other public comment? Commissioner Discussion? Anne, call roll, please.
Commissioner Snyder?
Yes.
Glazer?
Yes.
Twilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Noson?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
Committee Report Number Two, please.
Date of February 24th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. We, your Finance Committee recommend approval of the request to upgrade the county's information technology backup system. We recommend Waving County Policy 303.2 as it pertains to sealed bids to purchase the Avalon Technology Solution as requested by the IT GIS Director. The cost of this purchase is $160,000 and will be paid from Fund 401, General Capital Improvements. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, Chairperson, Jeanette Snyder, James Geisler, Finance Committee.
Commissioner Noson?
Mr. Chairman, the Finance Committee recommends adoption of Agenda Item 9-2-22.
Do we have any public comment on this item? Yes, state your name and address, please.
Hello, guys. Coleman, Michigan. I'm opposed to the fact that you guys have sealed bids. I think all bids should be made public notice to everybody to be able to see who's bidding and how much money they're bidding it for. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelly. Any other public comment? Any Commissioner Discussion? Anne, call roll, please.
Commissioner Glazer?
Yes.
Twilliger?
Yes.
Geisler?
Yes.
Dorian?
Yes.
Noson?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Chairman Bone?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no. Motion carries.
That's a light thing for standing committee reports. We're done with those. We do not have any RPCs, no old business to go over. We do have a couple of items of new business that I'd like to get a motion to take up.
So moved. Support.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, Anne, would you read item number one, please?
Date of February 24th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. I recommend approval of the attached resolution to support the submission of an application for grant funding to conduct a transportation feasibility study in Midland County. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, District Number Seven, Midland County Board of Commissioners. I do need a second on that, too.
Yeah, do we get a second on that?
Well, we need a first.
Was that? You got to move it. Do we have support?
Support.
Okay, is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none, Commissioner Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. We will move on to new item business number two.
Date of February 24th, properly addressed, ladies and gentlemen. I recommend the reappointment of Christopher Lackner to the Region Seven Agency Agent on Haging Advisory Council for a second term. on Aging Advisory Council for a second term. The term of this appointment shall be April 1st, 2022, through March 31st, 2025. Respectfully submitted, Scott Noson, District Number Seven, Midland County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioner Noson.
Mr. Chairman, I recommend adoption of Agenda Item 12-2-22.
Do we have support on that? Support. Is there any public comment on this item? Commissioner Discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we approve item number two, two, and we're going to move on to Commissioner Comments, and we're going to start with Commissioner Geisler.
Today is Fat Tuesday, and you might consider going to Bay City for a pooch.
Thank you. Commissioner Dorian.
I'd just like to thank the We Hear You Coalition to, for presenting to us today and to tell them that we hear them.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Noson.
I have no comment.
Okay, Commissioner Snyder.
I appreciated everybody that spoke today. It's good information. We like to hear from the public, and we like our presentations, and so thank you for speaking up.
Thank you. Commissioner Glazer?
No additional comments.
Commissioner Twilliger?
Yes, I would concur, I, I really did. It was enlightening and really good information, and I look forward to, um, perhaps collaborating and reaching out to address some of the deficits that they were talking about within today's presentation.
Thank you. And I, it was a good presentation, and I'd like to also just send out prayers to the people of the Ukraine. That's, uh, what's going on is, uh, pretty, uh, pretty scary, so hopefully things turn out okay. I do need a motion now to go into closed session to...
Move to go...
We got over meeting schedules, sorry, I missed that. Commissioner Geisler, meeting schedule.
A&amp;O, Tuesday, March 8th at 2:30 PM.
Thank you. Anything else, or does that cover it?
Covers me.
Okay, thanks. Commissioner Dorian?
Human Services is scheduled to meet Monday, the 7th, at 2 o'clock in the first-floor conference room, and that is all I have at this point. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Noson?
As it turns out, we have a Y meeting tomorrow at 5:15, update, next steps. That's a Zoom meeting. On Friday, MAC Finance at 10 o'clock in Lansing, although that is also a Zoom option. Monday, the 7th, Midland County Broadband Meeting at 11 o'clock. On the 8th, we have the Executive Committee at 9:00 AM, Finance Committee at 1:30. And then finally, on the 11th, the MAC Environmental Committee meets at 10 o'clock, also in Lansing. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Noson?
On the 2nd, in the evening at 6:00 PM, right here in the boardroom, we have Parks Commission. On the 3rd, at 9, at the Road Commission. Also, in the evening of the 3rd, we have the MCTOA, that includes all the counties and the agencies that support the counties. There's usually a lot of people there for discussion. On the 8th, those meetings were announced, I have Edenville Township and Geneva Township that evening, and the city of Coleman, I'll probably go to Geneva that night. And the 9th is Jerome Township. There's some leadership training through the MBA, and that's always open to people in the community, so I'm going to go to some of that on Friday, just as a refresher. I think it's good to have. And then the Village of Sanford has a meeting on the 14th in the evening at 7:00.
Thank you. And then we're going to go to Commissioner Glazer.
Yes, tomorrow evening, the 2nd, Midland County Parks and Recreation. After that, I'll go to Porter Township Board Meeting. Monday, the 7th, Human Services, here in the county building. Tuesday, the 8th, I have Greendale Township, 7 o'clock at Greendale. On Wednesday, the 9th, I have Jasper Township at Jasper Hall. On the 14th, Monday, I have Lee Township at Lee Township Hall, and then back here for our county meeting.
Thank you. Commissioner Twilliger?
Yes, March 3rd, Thursday, I have a Region Seven Agency on Aging Meeting that is a Zoom. March 9th, I have Midland Township at Midland Township Hall. March 10th, I have Drug Court, which is a Zoom, and following that, that's at 9 o'clock. And then at 10 o'clock, I have Pinecrest, and actually, we kind of alternate between the Fishbowl and this room. And then on March 14th, I have Ingersoll Township and Mount Haley Townships, and I sort of banter those back and forth, which one I start, but one, then one time, and I go to the other one, and, and I alternate that. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. And I have tomorrow, March 2nd, right here, Technical Advisory Committee. And then on Thursday, March 3rd, 5:00 PM, is, we have the Four Lakes Task Force meeting at the library, I believe. So that's from 5 to 7 on Thursday. That is all I need to announce at this point, so I take a motion to go into closed session.
Move to go into closed session, discuss labor negotiations.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same. Okay, we will move into closed session. Thank you all for coming, and it will be open session after our meeting. Session, and I believe that is all the business we have for the day, so I take another motion.